Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good, okay.
Welcome to Angels Camp City Council Meeting of June 19th, 2018. If you could please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Mayor Falendor?
Here.
Vice Mayor Herman?
Here.
Councilmember Beagle?
Here.
Councilmember Matilde?
Here.
Councilmember Olivera?
Here.
We have a floor.
Approval of the agenda. Do we want at that point to edit? Okay. So before we go ahead with approval of the agenda, we need to pull one item under consent and put it under the regular agenda item. And that will be consent agenda item D. B or D? D. And we're gonna put that, D, for the finance officers. And we'll put that first. And move it to the first item that will address on the regular agenda.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I was wondering why we're doing that instead of just bringing out a consent and discussing the same.
That was the advice of legal counsel.
Okay.
So I had this in hand.
All right.
There's a change in law, so the approval of city department heads' contracts should be allowed opportunity to comment. It's a change in law that happened about six months ago.
Okay, thank you. I'll move that we approve the agenda as amended. Should I get it?
All in favor?
Aye.
So, public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. I need to back up. Was there any public comment on the agenda? I apologize. That we just... No, okay. Sorry, moving on. Public comment. Is there any public comment of any item not on the agenda? Nope, okay. Item four, consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be retained. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, interested person may request that any consent items be removed for discussion. Is there any item that council wishes to comment? No?
I'd like to put, move B from that for a little discussion with Dave.
B, okay. I would like to pull C. Is there any public comment? Yes.
Item C?
C. Okay. We pulled that one too.
I'll move we approve consent agenda items A and E.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will start with the first item, B.
Yeah, for Dave?
Yes, sir.
For this contract, Dave, it's, the schedule is the notice date. Will you approve it? They get notice tomorrow?
To start? No. Actually, we, I worked out a notice to start so we don't have any liquidated damages. There's some lead time on the materials, but I'll start coordinating with the contractor this week.
So when is your, so I'm fishing for how that schedule plays out. Contract says notification date there to begin within 30 days.
Yes.
So what starts that clock?
It starts as the notice to proceed that I issue to the contractors. And usually what I try to do is work that out with them so they don't suffer any hardships. But it'll be within the month.
It'll be, you'll give them notice within a month?
Yes.
And then from that point, they've got a month to get started?
They got, yeah, a certain amount of time to get started, yes.
Not, no, what's the scope of this thing? Ninety-two thousand bucks is pretty significant.
Yes. It started out as a water leak repair. And when we opened up the, to discover where the leak was, it was a welded main with a strange kind of manifold. It was a wild idea, somebody had it sometime in the past. And to correct it, I ended up having to go further and further down the existing main. And that's how it ended up to be a larger project than, than just a leak repair.
So it's patched now or is it actively leaking?
It's still leaking.
Okay. And then, just FYI, there's some typos on 33 and 34.
Okay.
With respect to direction you're providing. For example, on the water meter assembly, it says contractor shall the water meter. There's a word missing and there's a consistency in those statements over the next two pages.
I'll crack those up.
Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Any other further counsel discussion on that?
I'll move we approve consent agenda item B.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get to work, Cole. Where is he?
Item C. I pulled it because I just wanted to give staff a round of applause for thanking them to getting this done. And a lot of hard work and planning went into this and it's finally nice to see that completed after all this time. So, thank you. So, is there a motion to... No. Sorry.
Mayor, I had a public comment on this. I too want to give some recognition. I want to start with, a year ago in May, after Frog Jump, we had the Vallesito Conservation Inmate Camp crew here who worked with Public Works in teardown of the staircase. And then I know council spent some time evaluating the best kind of repair or replacement, excuse me, of the staircase. And on behalf of the Angels Camp Business Association and Destination Angels Camp, we're delighted and tickled that it's done. I'm working with local merchants downtown and they too express their appreciation for getting the staircase in. It allows more of the merchants, owners, and the employees to park in the back, allowing for customers to park on the street. They also want to work with the city in regards to some sort of dedication ceremony in the future, recognizing the historical aspects of the staircase and the importance it is to the circulation of downtown. And they've asked me to work with the city on that. So I will work with Melissa or appropriate staff members. So on behalf of both of our organizations, thank you for your dedication and commitment. I know this took a lot of time and effort and money to put this project forward and it's noted and appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
Any other comment? Is there a motion to approve item C?
So move.
Second. All right, so we'll just let you do it.
All in favor?
You can do it, Nicole.
Aye. Scott and Linda.
Can I make all the motions? We go home, say.
There we go. Are you in a rush?
Okay, so we're gonna start with the item that was pulled from consent and that was the appointment of Emily Orr to the position of the finance officer. So I will hand it over to staff.
Thank you. As mentioned, legal counsel has advised this item needed to be pulled and placed on the regular agenda. Staff does recommend the appointment of Emily Orr according to the contract as negotiated.
When is your starting? Well, congratulations. Welcome you to the city. I don't know if she's here. Is she here? No.
Any public comment?
Yeah, public comment.
Before you pass this, I do want to recognize Emily. Emily is a local girl who grew up here, attended local schools, attended Bret Hart High School, graduated with honors. And we're delighted to see how she continued her upper education and made a return back to our community. While Emily is not here tonight, I know that she's excited to start this new endeavor. And I'd like to introduce her father, who is here tonight, Dr. Roger Orman, and her mother, Holly Orman, who's not here. So I think it's really important that we note and recognize, because so many times we hear where our locals, our local students, high school students, et cetera, are not able to necessarily find jobs in return to the community, and this is one good example. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Any other public comment? Okay, any other counsel discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move we approve the appointment of Emily Orr to position a finance officer with authorization to execute the employment agreement as negotiated.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is consideration of city participation in the statewide community infrastructure program, SCIP. Amy?
Here, council members. This item is to allow the city of Angels Camp to participate in something called SCIP, statewide community infrastructure program. And that massive paper we gave you is simply to say this is a mechanism to help developers finance their mitigation fees over time instead of having to come up with them all at once. James Hamel from the California Statewide Community Development Authority is here to give you a crash course on the program and answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Hamel?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is James Hamel. I'm Managing Director with CSCDA. We are a joint powers authority created by the League of California Cities and the California State Association of Counties, which the city is a member to. As Amy mentioned, this is really a tool that is gonna be in your toolbox now and is completely voluntary to both the city and developers to participate in. What it allows is it allows for impact fees and public infrastructure to be financed over a 30-year period with an assessment that is placed on that property. So developer comes in, the city is able to get their money upfront. And the reason this program was created 15 years ago was we were seeing a lot of cities were having to enter into deferral agreements for either infrastructure or losing projects or impact fees over time. And you, as a city, need that money right now. And in a lot of cases, they, you cannot do these financings when they're under $3, $4, $5 million. What we do is we pool the financings across the state of California with multiple projects. So right now, we have, our current pool has about 20, 21 projects in it for about $30 million. And it allows those costs to be shared across all those projects across the state of California. One thing to make clear is that if one project goes bad, that doesn't mean that it affects your city. Nothing is cross-collateralized. Everything is separated out. It just allows a pooling of a transaction. The investment market out there is very supportive of this type of program because they view it very much like a mutual fund where they're allowed to diversify their investment out there rather than putting all their money into one project. So again, this is a tool in your toolbox to help finance its infrastructure for the development within your city. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this point.
Any comment by counsel?
For our finances, what accounts are impacted should we participate in this with a developer for the city? Is it a general fund issue? Is it a, what is it?
This would mainly be for traffic impact mitigation fee collection, community services impact mitigation fee collection, that type of thing. We would be able to get paid upfront. The developer would be able to finance it over time. So it, in terms of impact, it saves staff time so we don't have to write up deferral agreements. But it more accurate, the best thing is it lets them pay upfront so we get our money and they get time to pay it off themselves. We don't have to take, we don't have to wait for them to pay.
And once they elect to participate, then they're on the hook for the bond, for the life of the bond.
That is correct. So they are, so it doesn't affect your general fund at all because these bonds are issued by our authority, CSCDA. And we handle, in addition to the front-end work, as Amy mentioned, we also handle the back-end work. So if there is a delinquency or an issue with this assessment that's on the property, we handle that and the city doesn't have to get involved in that. But it does not go towards the debt of the city. It is a direct obligation of that development or that property itself.
So are you familiar with the Greenhorn Creek subdivision? A development bond was put in place. It was a 25-year bond and each parcel was attached and the owners had an opportunity to either pay it off upfront or to finance it over time. Is this similar?
It's the same exact mechanism for that.
Same mechanism, okay, thank you.
Any further counsel comment, question? Public comment?
Debbie Pawnee, Executive Director of Destination Angels Camp. So our executive board had a chance to review this particular application and is in support of the city pursuing this. One of the things that we have found when we have larger developments such as a Greenhorn Creek, and I'm most familiar with Foothill Village, it was most difficult for the owner to come up with the funds necessary to fund the infrastructure. And a developers agreement was, was put into place, which helped. But most importantly, as we look at development in today, that's one of the largest expenses that a developer has. And to be able to have a financing mechanism, they don't have to take it. It's a tool in the toolbox. It is most helpful for developers on these kinds of projects. So on behalf of Destination Angels Camp and our executive board, we're supportive of this and encourage you to pass.
And I forgot to add that the Planning Commission last Thursday did consider this and took some public input on it and is recommending to the city council approval.
Any further discussion?
I just have one question. For me personally, I'm wondering if I need to recuse myself from this vote? If I'm anticipating being involved in development in the city limits? It just occurred to me there might be a conflict of interest if I vote. I'm asking attorney, city attorney.
Yeah, but recuse yourself.
Okay. I need to leave the room?
No.
It's too late for that?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any further, oh, sorry.
Hi, Susan Morris, Angels Camp. I don't know anything about this except for I just, when I heard joint powers authority, I just wondered, does the city council give up any authority when you come in, you come into agreement with this joint powers authority? Who makes the decisions on things that are gonna be decided upon? Is it the joint powers? How are we represented as people?
So from a process standpoint, what happens is that we receive an online application from a development. Whenever we get that application, that application is provided to the city itself and the city has to sign off on that application. We cannot move forward without a executed application confirming all the impact fees are correct and confirming that any infrastructure that's gonna be put in is correct there. So we view this, and historically view this, we are doing this on your behalf. We're not doing this in place of the city's power of this. So from a process standpoint, you are involved from start to finish. And when we do the financing itself, the city signs a tax certificate at the very end confirming everything is correct. So there is involvement by the city and we're not taking any powers away from the city itself.
Those things typically come before the council individually or are they signed off by the city administrator or how's that work?
They're signed off by city staff typically for those.
Is it the city and the company? Is that, is that the joint powers or is joint powers involving other entities?
We have 532 members, so we have pretty much every city and every county is a member to our JPA, our Joint Powers Authority. And we are only, our only function is really to act as a conduit for these types of transactions. So we're not taking any powers away from any of the cities or the counties who are participants. It's really acting on behalf for these types of financings.
Is there any oversight from any of the JPA members with respect to the activities of the group?
We have a board of nine members, which is made up of either, we have three city members and four county members. And they're either current city staff or they're, they are retired city or county staff. So there is that oversight function there, number one. And there's also an oversight function with the League of California Cities and the California State Association of Counties from that perspective, too.
Thank you.
Any further public comment or question? At this point, I'm gonna bring it back to council. Any further question, comment? Is there a motion to approve?
Move it.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So four to one.
How's that recorded? I did not abstain. I just didn't vote. I recuse myself. Yeah, that's not in the same as abstaining, right? Or is it?
I don't know. I assumed it was.
Abstain for the purpose of recusing yourself from the session.
The next, on our agenda is an appointment of city council subcommittee to develop the ballot argument for the city's proposed half-cent sales tax. So I will turn that over to staff.
So staff recommends that the city appoint two members to a subcommittee to prepare the ballot arguments for the half percent transaction use tax that the city is proposing for the November ballot. We are happy to answer any questions that you have, but we recommend that you appoint two council members to draft the argument in support of the initiative.
And these are typically the narrative that you see in the voter prep material?
Correct.
Typically, our office also helps assist with the drafting process.
Excuse me, we cannot hear any of you except for the lady in the face. We can't hear any of you.
How's that?
Test.
A little bit of an operating.
We're screwing up his sound now.
You couldn't hear me because I didn't say anything.
I'll try and talk louder. Sorry. I figured since it was this close, you could hear me. My apologies. Now, are there any council members that are interested in the subcommittee?
I'll participate, yeah.
I have participating.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Nope, okay. Is there any further counsel comment? Is there a motion to approve to appoint counsel member Olivera and vice mayor Herman to the subcommittee?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Who's your second?
Agenda item C. We will be waiving the second reading regarding the ordinance of the city council of Angels, adding chapter 5.10 Cannabis Business Regulation to Title V and repealing chapter 8.25 Medical Cannabis Regulation from Title VIII of the Angels Camp Initiative Code and repealing ordinance number 408, Anodyancy Ordinance Concerning Cultivation, Commercial, and Retail Sale, Distribution and Delivery of Marijuana and Related Land Use related to Cannabis Business Regulation. And I will turn it over to city attorney.
Sure. So can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a continuation of the, of the first reading, so I assume there was some lengthy discussion at the, at the prior meeting. Two ordinance options were, were presented to the city council and the ordinance that was decided upon would be the prohibition of all cannabis businesses within city limits with additional provisions regarding the delivery of cannabis to the city and fines for possession of cannabis with value in excess of $10,000. Restrictions on the time of delivery of cannabis and registry, registration requirements and the requirement to obtain a business license and pay the business license tax if it's adopted prior to conducting any cannabis deliveries within the city. So this would be a second reading to put that ordinance into effect.
This point, open it back to public and then bring it back?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So open it, is there any public comment? Nope. Okay, at that point, I'll bring it back to council. Any further comment? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
As drafted.
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Agenda item D, adoption of resolution 1831. This is a resolution approving the terms and provisions, can you guys hear me? Okay. Terms and provisions of the franchise agreement and authorizing the city administrator to execute said agreement for the collection of solid waste in the city of Angels. At this point, I will turn it over to city staff.
Thank you. Staff recommends approval of the terms and provisions of the franchise agreement and requests authorization to execute the agreement for collection of solid waste within the city of Angels. Since the first franchise agreement in 1987, we've had a handful of franchisees that have been providing service within the city, with Cow Waste being the most recent provider as it was assigned to them in 2013. The city has worked with Cow Waste to negotiate the terms and condition of the proposed franchise agreement. The city was successful in securing some provisions within that agreement, including the support of Cow Waste with compliance with all state solid waste diversion, recycling, and reporting regulations, payment of an administrative fee of $7,500 to cover city legal and administrative costs, payment of a franchise fee of 5% of the annual gross collection of revenue payable to the city 45 days at the end of each quarter, notification to the city of customer complaints, an educational and outreach program, the continued holiday tree removal program, free solid waste and green waste collection services at all city-owned and operated facilities, free 3.5 cubic yard bins for household bulky waste to the city and customers upon request for spring cleaning activities. This includes the disposal of e-waste, replacement of receptacles, an agreement to develop a low-income discount program, 18 donated 3.5 cubic bins annually for nonprofits or upon request by the community or city council, and 90% return on revenue from the recycling program. So I am pleased with the provisions of this contract and the services, the free services that are both offered the city and the residents of the community. Cow Waste is here to talk about the fee schedule as attached within the exhibit. They've prepared a PowerPoint presentation, so I'd like to invite them up so that they might deliver that presentation to the council. And I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have about the contract while we wait for their presentation.
Hello, everybody. I'm Rudy. Let's just copy the PowerPoint if you guys want it. We're flipping through.
Thank you. It's okay, yeah.
Oh, we should pass them down, though?
Yeah, yeah. Nice to meet you.
There we go.
Did you have me that one? I need to put it in my file.
I'm gonna plug this little disc in here, but while I get started, the last time we saw you guys, we were here with Destination Angels Camp and we did a little overview of, of our business. And we were here with Debbie and that was great. We kind of informed you guys what we're doing, the county and the surrounding areas. And at the end, I kind of presented that we would be talking with city staff because the contract was coming up to expiration. I believe it ended on June 10th. And we're in a month long, I believe we have a letter of understanding or, huh?
July.
Oh, sorry, July 10th. That's what I meant, sorry. Oh, sorry, July 10th, that's what I meant, sorry. So, yeah, as Melissa said, we've worked closely with Robin and Melissa over the past couple of months to come to terms with this agreement, and they were very productive, and we appreciate them pushing the process along and getting up here in front of city council to do this. So, like I said, we were here a couple of months ago, and we gave a brief overview of just our company. And we're a small, we're a family-owned business. We service the valley and foothill communities. We just recently celebrated our 90th year in business, so we're in our 91st year right now. I am a fourth-generation garbage man, and so, over the years, we've been in the communities of Bloatie, we're in Woodbridge, then we've come up to the foothills in about 2013 when we started to become the provider in Calaveras and Angels Camp, as I said there. And in 2016, when in Calaveras, we did a contract renewal, just like we're doing here today. And many of the provisions that were spoken to or not spoken to in that contract are also mirrored in the Angels Camp contract that we've renewed and amended, or we've proposed as renewed and amended. And then, throughout this 2016 process with the county, there was obviously a lot of explaining to do. I think that in the county, we had about 107 different rates at one point, so there was a lot of confusion, I mean, depending on what area you were in, and it was just a really unsustainable model. So, we went back to the county, and we went through this process, we're going with your folks today. We had some luck, we did a lot of studies, and we kind of have one uniform rate now in the county, and it's to service the county wide. There's a little variety in services as far as the collection systems. Up the hill, past Evans Pass is a little hard to get to, so it's really can service just because of the topography and all this other stuff. And down in the valley, we have the cart service that you guys, that we see today. And there's, I talked about a lot of these assembly bills and mandates that have come down the pipe recently, and a lot of these things that you see up here, I mean, there's a lot of numbers, AB 939, 1826, 1453, I mean, those are just kind of numbers to you, but these are what your state legislator, your elected state legislator have put these laws into place. And while many of them have teeth, some of them are goals, but the whole state of California and statewide is really driving towards this diversion and really getting what's recoverable out of the waste stream. And all these different assembly bills kind of reiterate the same thing, is you need to recycle more, you need to throw away less, you need to be conscious of where you're putting things. So, AB 939 has to do with diversion, going back to, I believe, 1998, where you're pretty much mandated you have to have 50% by 2000, and now the goal for 2020 is to have 75% diversion. And then, as you go down, there's assembly bills regarding food waste, whether it's mandatory food waste collection programs for large producers, and that's to really get the methane, or get the food out of the landfill, which in turn creates methane, and that kind of goes back to AB 32 and AB 1594, which is to keep organics out of landfill because landfill is the second-largest emitter of greenhouse gases behind automobiles. So, these are all focused around diverting waste from landfills, and in order to do that, you really have to establish programs. And these programs come at a cost, obviously, but they also become with equipment and education and failing, succeeding, and going back and forth. But we've used these programs in Calaveras through investment, and by investing in new carts, new trucks, and trucks that are one-pass trucks, they go down the road one time, they pick up your garbage can one time, pack it one way, they pick up your recycling right in the same truck, and it packs it the other way with a big split down the middle. I think there's a picture of one right here, actually, that I showed you guys last time. And we've become a lot more efficient doing it this way. And we've also had front-load, added front-load commercial service, as you can see on the left, and that's where the trucks are coming up and direct stabbing, and we're reducing injuries to our workforce, reducing our time on site, and we're not cracking the parking lots, we're not there as long. I mean, we all know asphalt loves to crack. I mean, we have our app that I told you guys last time, but not only that, but in this proposal, we're really going towards a green waste solution. We need to take green waste out of landfill. If you go back to the last slide, there was one, I think it was 1594, and that's saying that you really need to separate green waste out of the landfill. You can no longer use it as alternative daily cover, which is what they really do, is grind up the green waste instead of having to cover all the garbage with dirt at night or expensive liner, they grind the green waste and use that as ground cover. The state's now saying that that can no longer happen. I mean, even in Angels Camp, there really isn't, you don't have the three-cart green waste system yet, but with it in your trash, you're no longer going to be able to even keep it in your trash can, so you really need to separate it out. And as you see here, I mean, we're a local company, I mean, regionally, we have about 175 jobs, employ 35 people in the county, we have a $2 million payroll in Calaveras County, and which includes Angels Camp, and we're a member of the Butte Disaster Fire Relief as well. So, countywide, after this contract came into place, we actually had a growth in customers. I believe we increased our customers from when we took over the contract in 2013, I believe we've increased our customer base by about a third, and that's including with these new rates and this new system that we put in. In Angels Camp, currently, we have about 980 customers and I believe 139 businesses that are signed up for Cow Waste service currently. And this is a subscription service, so not every resident in Angels Camp has service. We drive by a lot of houses that don't have cans. We pick up just our existing customers. So, in this new proposal that we've given you guys, we propose a three-cart system, and that goes back to getting the green waste out and separating it. I mean, it's really a three carts. So, you have a weekly trash collection, bi-weekly green waste, and bi-weekly recycling, so every other week, one week's green waste, one week's recycling. You're always going to have two carts out in front of your house. We're adding a free handy hauler, which is really, as you can see here, there's a picture of a box. There's some more pictures of these down the road. I guess I'm just kind of getting into the programs that we're offering. And then, we're going to expand recycling services. Currently, on the City of Angels contract, there is no rates for recycling, it doesn't speak to recycling whatsoever. So, in reality, everybody knows that we have recycling in Angels Camp, but the cost of that isn't reflected in the current contract, current rate. With that expansion, there's, we'll have a variety of different service rates for recycling and for trash. And we have expanded city and community services. So, getting down to our rates that we propose here is the rates are on the bottom, and the communities are on the top. And here in Angels Camp, you can see our service rate, a proposed service rate is $22. And with that, you get, you have three options on trash, and this is the base rate option at the bottom, by the way. So, that's for the 35 gallon. And then, you get a 95 gallon recycle and a 65 gallon green waste cart at your house for each resident that subscribes to our service. So, this really is a three-cart system. And as you can see, if you go down the line here, with our proposed rates, Angels Camp is the cheapest rate in the surrounding foothill counties. And the Amador rate that you see on your paper is actually in Jackson, and it's where there's mandatory service. So, the rate's artificially low due to they get every house going down the street, and we don't. So, we are, from a rate comparison standpoint on this proposal, we are the cheapest round. And we're in, so, this goes to your basic residential service. We're proposing the basic service is a 35 gallon trash cart, 95 gallon recycle cart, and a 64 gallon, or 65 gallon green waste cart at each house. And then, you're going to get this free handy hauler service that I spoke of. And what this is, is for bulky waste, yard cleanups, what it does is, once every year, every subscription, every subscriber of ours gets one free handy hauler that they get at their own convenience. They can call any time of the year, and they can schedule us to drop this off. And what this can be used is for bulky waste, garage cleanouts, a yard cleanup, if you want to do a big spring cleanup in your yard, it can be construction demolition, it can be e-waste, like Melissa said, it can be trash, it can be yard and garden, and we'll come pick it up. And next to it is just the way we pick it up. It's just a fork truck, and something we've been using. They've been using it up the hill, but we've found it to be a great way to really, when you do have these bulky waste cleanups, you clean up your streets a little bit, you don't have the neighbor just going out and plopping it all on your, on the curb out there. Wind picks up, half the crud's down the block, and, or you get people coming by trying to pick through it. If it's really confined and put in one of these, it's much easier to handle, it's more convenient for all parties involved. And we believe it's a great service. We have customers in the county that absolutely love it, and, I mean, we give one a year, but we have people call for multiple services a year on this. And as I said, we're going to expand our recycling services in the city. Currently, there's no rates for commercial recycling whatsoever. And going back to the diversion requirements through assembly bills from your legislator, this is really a focus on Cal recycle right now. As I previously said when I was here, the city and the county were under non-compliance about three years ago from the state for not even offering recycling programs. And we, as Cow Waste, came in, revamped, before we even got the contract, had programs set in place that could really get the county moving and get under compliance from the state. And this is a huge focus of theirs on commercial recycling. And without that option in the current contract, the diversion requirements are falling short. And going to commercial rates, these are the proposed commercial rates for Angels Camp. And in the red, or to the right, is the communities surrounding Angels Camp, including Calaveras, Amador, and Toolumee. And the red essentially is a price that is higher than the proposed rate for the City of Angels. And I know you guys have black and white, so you can't see that, but then, the blue is where you're on the cheaper side. So, there's a lot, there's a lot of red on that board, and as you can see, we are very comparable, and we offer services that many other surrounding counties do not even offer. And the reason for the fluctuation in these other counties is that they're in, there's actually multiple haulers, so they have different rates, and they're set for different areas. So, that's the fluctuation part. And they have, yeah, like I said, even one hauler can have a different rate for each area in the larger counties. So, our city and community services, as Melissa said, we're going to offer six 20-yard roll-off boxes to community events at the firehouse, and you guys do a big feed here a couple of times a year, and some other events. We planned on giving free services to all city facilities and city locations, and that's everything from Melissa's office to the park, to the recycle and garbage cans on the main street here that we go by and service for no charge. We're going to do the 18 handy haulers that Melissa said that can be organized by community groups for cleanups, possibly illegal dumpings, or a house move out of somebody who moves all their stuff out, community can get together, and we'll provide these services at no charge. We put a cap on it at 18, but that was just more to cap it. I mean, we'd love to work with you. If you guys have more events like this, we'd more than be willing to make that number higher. And then, a community benefit also is reduced truck traffic. So, with the implementation of this proposal, we will start using these split-body trucks in Angels Camp, and that will reduce the truck trips on your roads by about 40% of our, in our trucks. And that is, it'll reduce road damage, traffic, safety, all of the above, and it will also get you in compliance with all these state mandates and reporting requirements that are currently active and coming on. I think, believe it's AB 1393, which has to do with organic reporting and commercial solid waste reporting is coming online, and we will be with Melissa on every step of the way to report and do everything we need to, to be in compliance, and we can guarantee you guys that with this contract. And then, the City of Angels will have a fiscal benefit in this contract and have a little stake in the game here, too, is that we're going to give a 5% franchise fee to be paid to the city, and that is on revenues collected by Cow Waste of Cow Waste customers. And we've estimated that that revenue will be roughly about $25,000 to $30,000 a year, or $35,000 a year. And that, there's a fluctuation there because we are a subscription service, we can go up and down depending on the number of customers that we have. And we believe within the life of the contract, that could be anywhere between half a million to $700,000. And that would go directly to the city. And we also are presenting this, that we also do in the county, we do a recyclable revenue share with the city. So, the way we see it is the recyclables that you have in that can are really the city and the residents that put them out. So, what we do is we process all those recyclables, and then, we, the individual commodities, all 13 of them, and then, we go out and sell them to market. So, what we want to do is give the city back 90% of the sale of the revenue of those recyclables, and we would keep 10%, and that 10% is to broker it and as well as the process of doing it, and for us to have a little skin in the game, too. And the estimated revenue of that is about $40,000 a year, or can be up to about $40,000 a year. Recycling markets are like any commodity market, goes up, goes down, but we believe through the life of the contract, that can be anywhere from another half a million to And it's just kind of, I think I left you these guys last time, too. I mean, the time to plan for the future is now, and we really need to get this contract approved and in place so that we can make sure Angels Camp is compliant with all state and county regs, and we want to be here and help you guys get through this process. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions, but at Cow Waste, we're a community member. We're not the big guy down in the valley, and we're not waste management. We are involved in the community, we're here, we go to the frog jump, we go to the parades, we have educational programs in all your schools to try to increase focus on recycling and the environment, and to really be a community partner. So, I guess that's kind of the end of our presentation, and I'd love to open it up to questions from the council.
Thank you.
So, I would just like to summarize that staff does recommend approval of the contract. Cow Waste has demonstrated themselves as a good partner to both residents and the city. I think within the agreement, they have offered competitive rates comparatively speaking with our neighboring regions. We've also negotiated several expanded community services that are really unmatched within those regions, and a fee, franchise fee, that is higher than our county comparable rate, and I think also the recyclable rate will be beneficial to city and our general fund as well. So, with that, I, too, am happy to answer any questions and would support the recommendation for approval for this item.
First of all, thank you guys for working together. I know this has been a long, a couple of months getting this, getting this going, and I'm going to be repeating a few things that you said, but, you know, my involvement with the League down at the environmental quality, which is about 30 cities, and we sit at the table, and this is all we've talked about, is how we're going to meet these mandates, especially in small rural communities. And we're really privileged to have them to come in and take over and meet the mandates that are required by the state for 2020, 2032, I think there's new ones coming out, and walk us through that process, that we, as a city, cannot provide those services, let alone meet those mandates. So, having this partnership, I think, is a really great, a great thing, and, you know, they are very involved in our community, and I think that's another plus to this, is we know who it is, they're active, and I really would encourage the council to support staff's recommendation to approve this contract.
Is there any other council comment or question?
I have a question.
Yes.
I was one about the residential rates. I just wanted to have kind of an explanation. I had here trash cans, this is the previous one, was, you know, 32 gallons, $1,256 was the monthly rate. And then, is it the reason, I mean, you've been giving probably the reasons, but if you want to summarize, I noticed it could be a 35 gallon, and it's going to be $22, and so, do you want to explain that, even though I think you have? want to explain that? Even though I think you have applied to this.
The, uh...
Yeah, it's gone up to $22 for 35 size can. It was 1220, 1256, I think, for 32 gallons.
Yeah, I think, um, I know the question you're asking. I mean, the, the jump in rates, um...
Yeah.
Is based on what I kind of described and the services that will be provided in this new contract and that are currently being provided, that are not anywhere in the current contract. Um, I could, uh, I can say that that's really, um, the, the challenge in explaining this, because this is, um, what we're kind of proposing is a, is a new amended contract with new rates. Um, this rate is not a rate that we set. We were assigned this contract in, uh, 2013. I believe the last time that this rate was ever adjusted or, uh, justified was probably in, I don't know, I might be speaking out here, but about 2011, 2010. So I don't know how to justify that $12.56 rate, other than we've been living with it for the last...
Oh, I see.
...four years.
So you're saying it's been lower than is acceptable. You would prefer it being higher?
The, the rates in the current contract are unsustainable for us to continue doing business in the City of Angels Camp.
Um, so you didn't charge before for recycling. So now is, is it just wrapped into this $22?
So yes, the recycling, uh, bi-weekly recycling service and bi-weekly green waste service will be included in that $22 rate. So you'll actually have, uh, um, you'll have two extra cans than what we're originally in that 1256 rate. So that's, uh, two extra truck trips and four extra transfer trips.
Okay. I have a little more question. There's, I noticed that the one that jumped the most is the 64 gallon and the 95 gallon. Uh, those, who, who uses, who contracts for those or whatever, the people who are larger, the larger cans? And the price has jumped much more considerably than the others.
Yes. So, um, kind of that, the difference in jump there is, um, the state of California, what, um, they've kind of adopted, um, as their plan in attacking a rate structure is to, it's kind of a concept of the more you throw away, the more you pay. So they really are concentrating on diversion right now. And such as all these assembly bills that I put up on here and the necessary, you need to have recycling programs, food waste programs, organic programs. Um, as far as trash collection goes, um, that's kind of been off the radar for about 15 years now. Um, so they've, they really, uh, look at you to go towards this incentivized rate structure that really benefits the person that has the smaller can.
I see.
So, uh, they're really trying to get you to divert more out of your own home waste stream into recycling and into green waste.
I see.
Yeah.
Is it your plan to replace these cans, 32 to 35, or just as needed? Or why the subtle difference?
So they will be getting, uh, an additional 64 gallon green waste cart at all of their residents, um, when this contract goes into place. And then over the past, uh, I believe three years, we've been putting out new cans. We did a big rollout about three years ago or, yeah, about three years ago, um, in the city with, uh, the big blue recycling can. And, uh, we did, uh, new, uh, gray waste containers, too. So you have, uh, you have newer cans and you'll be getting an additional green waste can.
There's a lot of 35s out there now, interesting.
Uh, yes. Yeah, majority of our customers are 35 gallon customers. Yes.
Follow-up to that. Have you got a sense for what percentage of participation we have here? You've got 980 for the city. And do you guys market that actively to try?
Yes, we do. We definitely do. Uh, we, we try to grow our customer base every day. Um, I think, I mean, we drive by a lot of houses. I'm going to look for a little help on this, but I'd say, I mean, how many homes are in Angels Camp, I guess, is the better question. We service 980 of them.
Yeah.
A couple thousand. I'm trying to remember.
So...
I think there's, I think there's about 1,700 based on UWP.
Okay, so, so that's about half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I spoke to, uh, I mean, Calaveras is a, and Angels Camp is very unique is that there's not mandatory service. In the state of California, there's only, uh, a couple cities, incorporated cities, that don't have some sort of man, mandatory, uh, collection service. And Angels Camp is, is one of them.
With, with a significant increase in fees, um, you know, most people can decide whether or not they want to continue the service or go on. But I'm, I'm glad to see there's a development of low-income program in here. And I've got questions, though. It's, do you know about how many people in the town, uh, qualify under the very low, uh, income customer or, or qualify for the PG&E care program?
We do not.
Yeah.
So this was something that the city was really strongly advocating for. Um, and so this was one of the items that CalWaste, uh, did agree to put some language. If you could point me in the direction of the page number just in case.
It's page 20. It's item 3.01E.
Yes.
And my concern is it's limiting to 100 people. And if there are 150 people, that means 50 people are not going to be able to sustain, you're talking about unsustainable in the city.
Yeah.
It's, it, this is a big increase for the low-income people.
So, and I would, I would just like to point out, um, that this was an item that we negotiated very carefully with CalWaste. This is not a service that they offer anywhere else in the communities they serve.
No.
So this was a special consideration that they've given the City of Angels for a 12.5% discount to eligible city customers, uh, based on a qualifying program that we can develop in partnership.
And with that said, it's, it's just, from a waste hauler standpoint, it's, it's a hard concept to administer. Um, for us to, who, who am I to say who's low-income or not, I guess. But it, from the standpoint of us to administer, if we, we just don't want to be the police on this one. We're more than willing to work with the city. If 100's not the number, it's not the number. Um, it's more of like, we just want to come up with a procedure on how to do it. And maybe we're not the police on it. But it's something that needs to kind of be revisited, maybe quarterly for those residents that are under that subscription. Uh, that was, that was really all in our concern. It wasn't, uh, that we weren't, we only want to do 100. It was...
So, and I, I think that within the language is the opportunity for us to create the program, uh, with the support of the city council and then review and renew that program on a regular basis with the city council as well. So if that's an area of flexibility, uh, then we can bring that item as it's worked out between staff and CalWaste before the council at a future date. But I am just appreciative of CalWaste for their inclusion of this discount to, um, low-income residents within the community of Angels Camp.
Yeah. And my concern, um, it's a very easy program to administer. We do it with Habitat for Humanity. We have the same criteria, the 30% of the, of the AMI. And it's a chart that comes out every year. It's based on a four-person household and it's adjusted for the number of people in the house. And it tells you just your income. If you make this, that's, that's it. So you do have to get proof of income, but it's not that tough to, to, you know, figure out.
So...
And then the care program, that's, that's a bill. So I think you should, we should be able to show that.
Right. And so that was what we negotiated with CalWaste, is that they're willing to offer the discount. They're willing to offer it to that number of employ, uh, citizens, but city staff will have to be determining eligibility. So we will have to create the process.
Okay.
And we will then provide CalWaste with the list of addresses or numbers by which that discount would then be reflected in their...
So if we, if we agree to be the underwriters on this thing, can we eliminate the $100 max, a 100-person maximum? I don't know, someone calling in who needs this, this discount.
Yeah, we can, we can eliminate that floor, um, or that ceiling at 100. Um, I guess some of that is, we are a subscription base. So if, if it's, if it's 500 people, it, it'd be nice to know. Um, that rate is, that rate is built with 100...
It might be 50. I don't know.
Yeah, that rate is built with 100% not, or I mean, with the 100 people paying it. So, um, we just have to kind of look at that. And maybe that could be a provision we look at, look back at every year. And if, if it's all of a sudden 200 one year, maybe there can be some, some room to adjust the rate. And if it's, you know, it was 100 and then all of a sudden next year it's 30, the rate can maybe go the other way. So I think there's, there's room for that, totally.
Okay. So can we include language in here that makes room for that change? So we would not have to fight over it if it happens?
Yes. I think we definitely have the annual review and renewal of the program. And then I think we could definitely make accommodation to negotiate potentially the eligible customers with CalWaste. What I foresee happening is as we develop this program, we'll be bringing it back for your approval ultimately.
Yeah. And if, uh, as long, as far as it goes, as, as for tonight, if, um, we're in agreement to, uh, to strike the, the 100 limit.
That's great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
In your, uh, in your, uh, development of the notification to people, should we pass this, uh, can it also be made fairly clear in your billing announcement with the rate change?
Oh, yeah.
That these kinds of services are being developed and some contact numbers and whatnot for people to pursue?
Is this particular to the, the low-income or the, the program?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
It's per limit we just talked about.
Yes, it'll be a notice that, that will go out with, uh, whatever information. Well, we're going to create some material that the city's going to sign off on and review or just review before it goes out. And they have comment and 100%. We're not going to put it in fine, nightly print at the bottom behind a black base or something. No.
On your, uh, service rates, um, the, the structure here is good for one year, right?
Um, yes, it is.
Um, last time we said that, we got five years out of you.
Yeah.
So what happens with respect, what do you see happening next June 30th?
So, um, the way that this contract is structured is, um, it goes off of an index. Um, we, and there is a, we have the ability to ask for an annual rate review, um, with the city. And what that does is it looks at a, an index and it's a index, uh, it's the water sewer trash index. And, uh, then that index is assessed, uh, each year going forward. And it's like a CPI index. Um, and we, um, have the right within the contract to, um, come back for a rate adjustment and, um, capture those increase in expenses that have been seen in our, our industry. Yeah.
Okay.
So it looks like the contract can't, the prices cannot go down, but they can also not go up more than 5.5% in a year?
Yes, there's a ceiling on that, uh, water sewer trash, yes. Um, I believe in the, in the past, it's been, uh, it rates about, um, between 3% and 4% a year, water sewer trash tracks at, around there. I mean, that's, it's all over the place, but I think in the five-year average or something like that.
Okay.
Public comment?
I'm just making sure you guys...
Are you guys good?
Okay. Is there a public comment?
I love CalWaste. I do not use them, but they have been absolute supportive in our community. I think this is a wonderful contract. My concern is not, I go to the dump, so I don't need a garbage service. I have a ranch. So my concern is with Big Horn Mobile Home Park, like you, you said, um, they are mandated to have garbage service. I have an empty home over there and I still have to pay for the garbage to be picked up, even though I'm not having anybody live there. So my concern is like yours, Scott, the low-income, there's well over 200 people that live there, 200 homes. So that is wonderful. And I want to say thank you to those, for those people that the discount will be there for them. Thank you again.
Any other?
Debbie Pawnee, Executive Director of Destination Angels Camp. Um, CalWaste has been a member of our advisory council since its inception and has been a very loyal and supportive partner throughout the years. In addition to their loyalty and commitment to the City of Angels Camp, um, they have donated on a number of items. And I'd like to acknowledge those things, um, in regards to the farmer's market and the trash, the trash that's throughout town and the trash containers and picking up. Our Trash Bash, which is happening on June 29th here in Angels Camp, probably our last one, as we go forward with the contract, that, um, will allow for pickup on a different kind of level. Um, most recently, they were instrumental in the Utica Park cleanup, um, where we had to tear down the gazebo because it was condemned. Um, CalWaste brought in debris boxes and at a donation of about $1,700 for those boxes. So the gazebo stuff could go in there. They also did some green waste. Again, the Vallesito Conservation inmate camps came in and did weed eat. Um, so CalWaste has been a very loyal and dedicated partner to the City of Angels Camp. I think it's important, too, to note on the commercial service. Um, that's important. And that's where it affects our economic development opportunities within Destination Angels Camp. And with those services it brings onboard and in line, um, with other communities within Calaveras County and throughout. But more importantly, we also see that it's coming into compliance. Um, if we don't come into compliance with our landfill down in Milton, um, our, our commercial customers will suffer greatly, more than the residential. And so it's really important that we establish good, good rates. We have a good loyal partner so that we can address the AB 939s and 458s and on and on and on. Because the state of California really doesn't care the size of your community or who you are. These mandates are coming down to everybody regardless of size. And as Amanda mentioned on her League of Cities work and with the, um, the waste part of the League of Cities and their involvement, um, they're very, very supportive of CalWaste's and what they do for their communities. What's also important and a kind of a side note that not most people realize is that a part of our recycling fee that we all pay for when we're buying the recyclables goes into the State of California Recycling Market Development Zone, known as an RMDZ. And Destination Angels Camp, in partnership with Calaveras County, has applied to become a zone and working with CalWaste. And basically what that means is there's a pool of money there at the state. And if we should have a business who wants to come into either Angels Camp or Calaveras County and wants to, um, maybe develop or a product that is a kind of a product of a recyclable item, and I'll use paint as the example because that's the most popular right now. When people throw away paint, they would, if we had a, a business partner that wanted to utilize those paints and recycle the paints and resell those paints, I know Habitat for Humanity uses a lot of that. Um, there's opportunities like that. And whether it be in Angels Camp or Calaveras County. So we don't know yet if we will be one of those zones, um, but we're hopeful that we can, so that we can pursue some of these partnerships with CalWaste and others as we look at our recyclables and how to reuse them and create business opportunities. So on behalf of Destination Angels Camp, we too support this, uh, staff recommendation and look forward to our continued partnership with CalWaste.
Any other public comment?
Sure.
Oh.
Hi, I'm Dwayne Garcia, President, Angels Camp Business Association. Um, I'm not coming to you as a resident of this area, but I am coming to you with the experience I've had for the last 24 years. I had CalWaste as my provider. And I can tell you, over those 24 years, the service that I've received, when I had issues, like a broken can, you call them up, they deliver, no questions asked. Um, I went from the big brown can to the little can because my kids went to their onsite, uh, educational program they give. And they taught my kids how to recycle. And they came home and taught us. And within two years, we had gone from the big 35s to the small brown cans that they provide. So I can tell you, the services, the prices, and the fact that they want to work with the city and, and give the service to the people of our community, that just tells you the type of business that they are. Family-run, community, supportive, and, um, great service. That's all I'm going to tell you. I think if you get in, uh, in, I almost say in bed with them, but if you, if you do provide the contract to them, I believe that you're doing a great service to your community. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. With that, I will bring it back to council for, um, a motion. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 1831? So move. Second?
Would you take a friendly amendment to make sure that we, uh, eliminate the cap of 100 very low-income residential customers?
So the resolution authorizes the city manager to make changes to the franchise agreement with the help of the city attorney. So you can approve the resolution as drafted and we'll make those changes.
Okay.
Good. Do I second? Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is council reports, and I will start to my left.
Nothing. Okay. Nothing to report? Okay. Anything?
No report.
No report?
Okay.
Okay, looked like I'm the only one. So you guys get to listen to me anymore. Um, last week I attended the Central Valley, um, Executive League meeting. Um, we had a presentation on cow poos and where they're at with that. I provided, Melissa, the documentation that were provided to us about, um, where the state and the legislation is going regarding cow poos. Um, the biggest topic was, um, cow poos is dis, is removing a lot of their investments. For example, tobacco, they're pulling out of tobacco industry because of personal feelings and so that it, the, we're losing out on a lot of investment. Um, another one is, there's a current bill, um, on the floor which is, um, to just invest in, in the country of Turkey. So that's another loss to cow poos. So there's a lot of conversations about, um, with the elections, with their board members currently and where we want to see cow poos go with their investments. And that is costing, uh, our retirement system. So there was a big, big conversation about that. Um, I also, um, had the privilege of eating dinner with Dave Hannam, new city council. Um, they, uh, really think highly of him and they are jealous of all the things that we have come into town. And they said that they will be going back to Dave and asking for, um, what he did here to come down to his city. But it sounds like he's doing well. And, um, I also, uh, spoke with, um, the city manager and the mayor of, uh, Riverbank and they just recently, um, had their retail dispensary open and they're already closing in at $100,000 in sales revenue for the city with their, um, with their dispensary. So there was a lot of, um, conversation about that and highlights and positives of those things. Um, and then next is, we have, um, a thank you from the fair for sponsoring, um, one of the belt buckles. So I don't know if the rest of the council knew, but we sponsored a belt buckle for the fair. So, um, they sent us a thank you, um, to the city on that. And then this is more of, um, staff. Um, is there any way with this summer coming up to possibly consider in our budget to put a porta potty at Triumph Park to help eliminate the amount of waste that is going on?
So I will work with our, uh, Public Works Director and City Engineer and we will bring back an item for a discussion and research that topic.
Okay, thank you. And that is all I have. So next on the agenda is calendar.
Okay, tomorrow looks pretty busy. The 20th at 8:00 AM, there's an ACBA, ACBA board meeting. 9 o'clock is IRWMA at the TUD offices. 10:00 AM is COGS Technical Advisory Committee meeting. Then on the 21st at 8:30 is a museum commission meeting and 10:30 is, um, Destination Angels Camp Executive Committee meeting. The 26th at 5:30 is UWPA. And the council will be, um, in budget workshops on the 29th beginning at 10:00 AM, going to 4:00 PM. And then we'll be back here for council on July 3rd.
For the workshop for the public, they are invited.
Absolutely.
So if the public is interested in listening, um, they are invited to the workshops as well. Okay. And with that, we are, is there a motion to, drawn?
So moved.
Second, I forget about that every time.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I was just saying, may I?